Hello, everyone. Welcome to Sunset City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, May 10, 2021. This meeting is being held in person at the Sunnyside Community Center and via the Zoom conferencing application to enable council members, city staff, and residents to participate remotely. The meeting will continue as long as there's a quorum. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call an Eric member to speak to make sure you have had an opportunity to do so. This time we call into order and we have our Deputy Amendmentary City.
Okay, Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Here.
Counselor Farmer. Counselor Henry.
Here.
Counselor Ristucci.
Here.
Counselor Hicks. Counselor Hart. City Manager Casey.
Here.
City Clerk Ventoria, I am here. Finance Director Alba.
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson.
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera.
Here.
Public Works Director Fisher.
I'm here.
Thank you, Jack. So we have a quorum, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be a public employee recognition proclamation. So I'll read that into the record. Whereas public employees have risen to the moment, bringing strength, healing, and hope to their communities, and are a living reminder that they take care of one another and leave no one behind. And whereas public service is a noble calling involving a variety of challenging and rewarding professions, and whereas the commitment and perseverance of public employees during this pandemic have allowed essential services to continue and protect public health and safety. And now, therefore, I, Francisco Guerrero, as Mayor of Sunnyside, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2 through May 8, 2021, as a Public Employee Recognition Week, to honor employees and their commitment to their communities. In testimony whereof, I have here on to send my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed that the city of Sunnyside is 10th day of May the year 2021. Okay, moving on up to our next agenda item, which is going to be legislative update from Representative Jeremy Defoe. And I think I see him with us tonight. So thank you for coming out and joining us and giving us an update on what's going on at the legislature.
Well, thank you, Mayor Guerrero. It's great to see you in person. I know you take the trip over to Olympia, and that wasn't possible this year. So great to see you in this format, along with the other members of the Sunnyside City Council and the other folks who help us, who help run this great city. So hello to everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to visit with you tonight. The legislative session concluded, as most of you know, on April 25. And so we had some legislation that passed that did benefit Central Washington. Unfortunately, we also had a lot that, in my view, did not benefit Central Washington. But some road preservation and maintenance funds were appropriated and allocated for our district. That's a good thing, in my opinion, and we'll continue to press towards road preservation and maintenance as a priority for our state and to make sure that we're supporting good infrastructure, especially in the rural parts of our state. One thing that is very concerning to me, and I know some of you have spoken to me about this issue, is the Blake decision and the legislation that came out that basically legalized hard drugs in Washington State in 2023. I think that's going to have a very significant negative impact on our communities and especially be challenging for law enforcement. We all want to help folks who are suffering from mental health issues and substance abuse, but some folks aren't in a position and don't want to be helped and can cause significant problems here in our communities. And we need to have every tool available to law enforcement to keep our streets and our community safe. And we need to make sure that we're sending strong messages to our children about right and wrong and making good decisions and becoming good citizens. And so I think we've got a lot of work to do in that space. I know this will be an issue that will come up at the local level, because that's, of course, where all these real issues have an impact. So those are kind of the main highlights that I wanted to talk about, one positive, one negative. There was a lot that happened, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, if there's time for that. But I mostly just wanted to let you know that myself and Alec, we are available full time, even though the legislature is out of session. Alec, my legislative assistant, is on this call. He'll be in some subsequent Sunnyside City Council meetings, just to keep tabs on everything that you guys are doing and see where we can be of service, be of help. But in the meantime, I think you all have my cellphone. If you don't, I'd be happy to provide it to you and look forward to connecting with you on any of the issues that are coming up at the city manager level, at the council level, or anything else that's going on in the city. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. Good to see you all.
Thank you for taking the time and giving us that. I think greatly appreciated. And I'll ask councils, any questions specifically for you? If maybe they want to do it offline. But council members, any questions for Representative Defoe for now?
No questions, Mr. Mayor, but I do would like to make a couple of comments, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. First, thank you, Representative Defoe, for joining us this evening. We know how busy your schedule is, and I know you just got through with a tough legislative session. So I appreciate the time that you took tonight to come and speak with us and update us on the session. My colleagues and I have had some conversations in regards to a few of the bills that actually got through. One of them is 1054, which I know you spoke about and are concerned about. And being a former council member, you know that this puts council manager, former government, in a really sticky situation where they're allowing the mayor of the city to make a decision that should fall to the city manager of the city and actually forcing the mayor to violate the law under RCW 35A 13120. I'm just wondering what you might have to say about that, and if there's any discussion about making changes to that, as it will affect 165 cities in the state.
Well, thank you, council member. I appreciate the question. 1054, I, you know, there's a lot of bills that came at me. Could you remind me of what that one did in particular?
Sorry, sir. I apologize. It's the one that grants the authority to use tear gas to the highest elected official in the city.
Oh, I see. Oh, you're talking about the police tactics bill. Yes. Oh, yes. No, I have grave concerns with that one and do not support it. I think that's very problematic. In my view, that bill defunds partially and disarms our police officers, and that's the wrong direction for public safety and for the good of our state. I think everyone would be in support of police accountability, and I think we need to make sure that folks are doing their jobs. But in my experience, coming from a family with law enforcement members in that, in my family, I think almost all of them are great people, and we need to give them every tool at their disposal. And I think that the mayor, the city manager, whoever is the leader of the city, should have the ability to make sure that the police are empowered to keep our communities and our cities safe. As to the particular distinction between a city manager and a mayor, I'm not familiar with any discrepancy between what that did or something that might have happened that would adversely impact a city manager forms of government like Sunnyside has. But I'd be happy to look into that more if there's going to be some impacts that maybe weren't fully discussed during our floor debate on that, on that very controversial bill.
Thank you, sir. I would appreciate that, and I can talk with you more about it offline. You can start with RCW 35A 13120, which is interference by council members, because the mayor is a council member. So that one prohibits the mayor or any member of council from publicly or privately giving directions to subordinate of a city manager. So according to 1054, in order to deploy tear gas, the police chief would have to ask the highest elected official in the jurisdiction. In this case, it would be the mayor of the city of Sunnyside, which I've served in that role for eight years. I can tell you, it's a tough role, but definitely not supposed to have any regular administrative duties, and this would be a regular administrative duty under the law.
Yes, it certainly sounds like it. You know, just from an administrative perspective, and this is all within your purview, much in expertise, much better, much more than mine, although I was a Seala City Council member at one point, so dealt with some of these issues. But it could be something that the mayor could do as a delegation of authority that's just a blanket statement, so that the city manager is empowered to react in real time. But it sounds like you're very well versed on the particulars, council member, and I'd be happy to discuss it with you more in case I'm missing something else there. But I think that's one of many complications that our law enforcement and that our communities, whether they're a strong mayor or city manager governed as a frontline person, are going to encounter with these limitations that are being imposed by the state government and the state legislature. And I think it wasn't just this bill. It wasn't just the police tactics bill. There were a number of bills where really the state is taking over and making decisions that are going to have very dramatic and surprising, and I think negative impacts at the local level by taking away and not taking into account the particulars of how various communities operate, their cities, and their counties. So I think you're right to focus on these things that don't get a lot of attention when the bills discussed, but have significant impacts and create a lot of back-channel work for the folks who are trying to do a good job and are doing a good job, and most cases have their hands full running our cities.
Thank you. Muted, Counselor Ristucci.
Oh, thank you, sir. And then to end on a good note, because you did get some good things done this year, and I appreciate that. As Chair of the State AV Work Group, I want to thank you for supporting SB 5460 and getting it to the governor's desk. We appreciate that support. You know, that work group has got three more years of work to do to help prepare the state for autonomous vehicles, and any help you can give us, we appreciate that. So thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Senator Honeyford gets a big shout out for that. He really pushed forward the aviation work and some of his legislation. And I know everyone there knows and loves Senator Honeyford just up the road, but he really did a heavy lift on that and deserves a lot of credit.
Thank you, sir.
Council members, anyone else? Okay, I think we're in the clear. Thank you very much again for joining us and giving us an update. I really appreciate taking the time to come out, and hopefully we see you in the future again, and we appreciate your time.
Anytime. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have a scheduled public comment. Mr. City Manager, or Jackie, do we have anybody at the community center willing to do a public comment, or did we have any emails, voice messages that got sent in?
We did not receive any advance request for public comment. I'll defer to the clerk if there's been anything coming since last I checked.
We don't have any public, we didn't have any schedule, but we have Larry Hill here.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and start the timer, or we'll go ahead and give an opportunity to speak?
Yeah. Larry, would you step up to that microphone, please? Thank you.
I was hoping last year, when you proposed the Transportation District and went on for a sales tax increase, I was hoping you would increase it more than that to an extra set on top of what you did for funding the police department and fire department for their purchase of vehicles instead of going out of the general fund and putting it in there. It'd be a separate fund to pay for it and put it in as a lifetime amendment to the sales tax to help pay for that. Instead of the taxpayers having to dig into the supply of money and separate it to fill that, issued the buy vehicle for the police department and the fire department, no matter what type of vehicle it was, for those two agencies only, because I thought.
Jackie, I think we lost audio for Mr. Larry.
Jackie appears to have left the conversation. She, I saw a notification that Counselor Ristucci has been made the host.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why. I did get the notification that I have been made the host.
But it, it appears we made, there she is. She's back. Or coming back.
The minute she's here, Mr. Mayor, I'll make her host again.
But I got a notification that she is the host again.
Okay, great. Perfect.
It blinked on and blinked off.
Not that I mind running a meeting. I'm more than happy to do it.
And will burst, so it's a good thing.
Looks like we lost some council members. It doesn't look like Ms. Hart's there anymore.
She is in person.
We lost internet. We lost internet at the community center. Sorry. It disconnected everything. Um, okay, Mr. Hill. Yes, Mayor, will you, can we allow Larry to start over again?
Yes, please. It wasn't his fault that the internet went out. So yes, please go ahead and restart if needed.
Okay, I'm going to restart the timer, okay?
Better to support that and find us a way to, everybody that comes into this community to help pay for our fire service and our police service instead of just the city taxpayers paying for it themselves. The other part isn't so pleasant to talk about. In January, we had an incident next door at my neighbor's house where somebody fired gunshots at that residence and vehicle that was parked there. I talked to Mr. Farmer about it because he wasn't informed about it. He contacted the city manager and tried to find out what was going on. He was contacted later on, and he informed me that they didn't classify that as a drive-by shooting because they couldn't find any shell cases. I don't know if there was any more further investigation done. I didn't see any detective go talk to them. They parked their vehicle in the driveway. It's been there ever since. It has a bullet hole in the tailgate, window busted out, the tire rear, that the rear front, driver's side passenger tire was going flat at the time. They looked at the vehicle, police officers did. They were there for a while, and I never seen anybody else. Three weeks ago yesterday, another incident. It involved the city police here involved in another shooting that occurred on one of their vehicles while they were on a state highway. The state patrol was there at 2:00 in the morning. Lot of noise. tow truck was there. They pushed the vehicle up on the trailer and took it in for evidence. The detectives were there two different days for two and a half hours, talking to the people that were shot at. Rear back door on the passenger side was hit with bullet holes. No more further investigation. They didn't call for Sunnyside to back them before the state patrol got there because I didn't see any Sunnyside police officers at that scene. This is getting to be real bad in this neighborhood, and something's got to change. I hope they do something about it soon. I know I'm not going to get any comments from that.
Okay, well, thank you for your public comment. And if you don't have anything else further, we'll move on to our next citizen. Mr. Casey, you're going to follow up Mr. Larry, and if he has additional questions, we can do that, you know, obviously on a 101, I think, or over the phone. Yes, Jackie, do we have anyone else at the community center?
I do not.
Okay. All right. So move on to our consent agenda, which is going to be the approval of the minutes for the March 22, 2021 regular meeting. Approve payroll vouchers numbers 118909 through 118914, and wire transfers are listed for $667,437.71 for the period ending on April 30, 2021. Claim vouchers, approve claim vouchers numbers 101225 through 101254, and wire transfers is listed for $109,212.95 for the period ending on April 28, 2021. Approve claim vouchers numbers 101255 through 101288, and wire transfers is listed for $66,842.31 for the period ending on May 5, 2021. Approve claim vouchers, wire transfers is listed for $21,655.10 for the period ending on May 5, 2021. Councilors, any questions, comments, or items to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, you're not as being pulled, or we'll go down the list. Is there any questions or comments on this? Deputy Mayor Burisma, questions or comments?
Can you repeat that again?
Yes, I'll just ask, is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Jackie, did Deputy Mayor Burisma say something? Because we couldn't hear him.
He said he didn't have any comment.
Okay, so I'll just ask one more time. Is there any questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
I would second that motion.
Okay, motion by Counselor Henry, second by Counselor, I'm sorry, motion by Counselor Ristucci, second by Counselor Henry to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, here on debate, Mr. City Clerk, you do a roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yeah.
Counselor Ristucci.
Yes.
Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yeah.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Up next, we have our active agenda, which first time is going to consist of Yakima Valley Conference of Governments letter of support. Consider authorizing the city manager to submit a letter of support to YVCOG's federal grant proposal for regional affordable housing. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This, I see that Chris Wickenhagen from YVCOG has already activated her camera. I'll just briefly introduce her. She's the executive director, has been in place there a little over a year and a half now. You've carried us through COVID, Chris. We very much appreciate that. And is here tonight to present a proposal from YVCOG. They're applying for federal, potential federal funding. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Martin. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to present to you. Before we jump to the letter that I'm going to be asking your support for, I'd like to give you a brief overview of what we do at Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. You may have heard us called YVCOG or COG. Cogs are regional entities throughout the United States. We can provide any service to cities and the county. Some services COG administers as 911, some operate a regional public transit system, some handle dispatch, some the homeless program, regional housing, engineering, attorneys, parks, recreation, procurement and purchasing, and some even animal control. I share a few of these programs, just so you're informed about the different services we could offer. The impact to cities who take advantage of us using a COG is saving taxpayer money by collaborating with other cities for services. It helps cities budget by sharing the cost. In a way, we are an extended staff to you. Instead of hiring and paying a full-time position, you share the cost of an employee, and the employee performs specific responsibilities for cities who share in paying their salary. This could be a huge benefit for Sunnyside, and I would be honored to share more with you, especially as you are developing your budget for next year. Now that you have an overview of who we are and what we're able to do, there are specific programs YVCOG is required to perform by the federal and state government. The work we perform for the valley for transportation allows our cities to receive federal funding for their infrastructure projects. Millions of dollars is funneled into our valley each year. Reviewing my report, Sunnyside Sixth Street Improvement Project has been awarded through YVCOG, and you will be obligating $3 million in 2023. That's a lot of money. The same approach we use for regional transportation planning is how we would like to tackle the housing shortage in our valley. We have learned that by YVCOG applying for federal and state funds for affordable housing for the entire valley in lieu of our cities competing against each other is preferred. If we are able to bring money into our region and then work individually with our cities and their vision in addressing this, we will be able to start chipping away at this need. I've provided a sample letter of support for your consideration. I'm asking for your support in collaborating with YVCOG to address housing rehabilitation and affordable safe housing for your constituents to experience the dream of homeownership. Thank you for allowing me to present. You can always reach out to me later if you think of something specific you would like to discuss with me. Or of course, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Thank you for that overview and explanation of what COGS do. I know it's been a couple of meetings, and they do offer a lot of good services that some cities may not be able to afford or don't have the staff to do so. So it's definitely a great organization to have in our back pocket in a sense to be able to utilize when we need it. So with that being said, council members, I'll go down the list and see if any questions for Chris on this letter of support, and we'll start with Counselor Ristucci.
No questions, obviously, Mr. Mayor, but want to place on the record, I am the Chair of the COG. This has no financial benefit for me, and I do not believe that I have a conflict of interest, and I plan to vote if there is a vote. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Counselor Henry. Hey, welcome back to Counselor Henry. Counselor Hicks.
Can you repeat that? Counselor, can you repeat that?
Yes, no questions. No questions, okay. Counselor Farmer.
No questions.
Counselor Hart.
No question.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
No questions, only a comment. I like the idea that we can apply for these grants regionally instead of all of us in different communities competing against each other for the same money. I think that that's a good idea, and if this pans out, there may be other opportunities that we have that we can apply regionally for different sources of funding as well. So I think it's a good idea.
Excellent. And I don't have any questions here. It sounds like it's obviously something that would definitely be beneficial to do a regional approach to this instead of a piecemeal by city. So it sounds like it would be a great ask to have, to get those funds in place. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and start a roll call. Does anyone want to do a motion for this that we could get in the record, council members?
How about it without objection, Mr. Mayor?
We could do without objection if you guys like. If I don't see any objections, then we'll just allow, authorize the city manager to submit a letter of support for YVCOG's federal grant proposal for regional affordable housing. You know, objections, so ordered. So Casey, you are able to work with Chris on this and work out a little support, and hopefully they get some funding.
Thank you. I hope I get to come back to you and tell you, we got the funding. Let's start working in Sunnyside.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming out tonight and giving us an update on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, up next, we have Otis Avenue. Provide direction on whether to sell or lease the unimproved section of Otis Avenue. Mr. Casey, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the follow-up to the workshop discussion that we had with you here about a week, end of last month, I guess, or beginning of the month. The issue here is that there's a strip of land that once, historically, when the city was originally laid out, or many years ago when the city was being laid out, was set aside. was set aside potentially for future development as an extension of Otis Avenue westward toward what we think of now as South First and so forth. In the 1970s, half of this particular strip was transferred over to the Port of Sunnyside as part of a real estate transaction, and then later that portion was then kind of utilized by first the Independent Foods Company, and then that was succeeded by Seneca Foods for their large operations there on South Fourth Street. The north half of this strip was then integrated into the city parcel on which we build our wastewater treatment plant. The current owner of this property, the South Fourth Street property, approached the city recently because for many, many years, the site has essentially been used as access, or at least partial access for the north side of that facility. He'd like to continue further development of the facility and make use of it for loading and unloading, and approached us about possibly getting a an easement or something across there. Public Works Director and I and city staff met with him, met with the port. The port has already decided to convey their portion of the property to this property owner to the south. And question before council is, would council prefer to retain ownership of our 30-foot strip and lease that to him with appropriate easements? Or are we comfortable with going ahead and also conveying it to him through a sale? And again, either option, we would retain utility and other access easements necessary. We've outlined both of those options for you in the brief, and with that, Public Works Director Fisher or I could either, if you'd like, the Public Works Director could go over the two options for you in a little more detail, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess, does council have any questions? I guess we'll go down the list and save the questions, any questions, and if they prefer a lease or an outright sell. Counselor Henry?
I would say a sell sounds the most logical. It's a win-win for everyone. That's where I stand on that.
Okay, Counselor Hicks?
I think a lease, once you get the plan, never really want to let go of it.
Okay, Counselor Farmer?
I, I would much prefer a lease.
Okay, Counselor Hart?
I'm typically toward the option.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Burisma?
I would, at this point, concur with my colleagues here. I'm concerned if we release the access to the land that we have, and then we need it again in the future, that it's going to be really difficult to get that back. But I'm more than happy to allow them to lease it, even if they do so at no cost. But I definitely want to retain ownership of that.
Okay, Counselor Restucci?
I agree with the comments of Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I was leaning towards a sell, since it doesn't seem like we have a whole lot of use for that. There's never going to be a street associated in that area. But again, you know, I'm not opposed to a lease. I prefer that. The property could eventually evaluate more and increase in value, and just down the road might be something we, the city could use for future expansion of that facility that we have there. So I'm not opposed to a lease. At this point, we have one, two, three, four, five, six opting for the lease and one for the sell. So, Mr. City Manager, that's kind of where we're leaning towards, the lease of the property.
Very good, Mayor. We'll be able to use that direction to go forward with our next conversations with the property owner. And appreciate council's comments and observations around the interests that the city wants to retain in the property, as well as the flexibility for leasing at a reasonable rate. And Public Works Director and I will be able to initiate those next steps. And once we have a lease proposal negotiated and worked up with the document, we will bring that back to council for final approval.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is going to be our executive session. We'll look at 10 minutes.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. I just, I should clarify, the executive session was going to be necessary only if council opted to put the property up for sale and wanted to go into an executive session in order to fix the price at which the property could be offered for sale. Since council's not doing a sale, there's no need for the executive session.
Perfect. Okay, one less thing to worry about tonight, then. Thank you for the clarification. All right, up next, we have then items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I did get an application from our city clerk for Mr. Michael Aguirre. Sounds like he at one point was a council member and also a planning commission member, so he has plenty of experience in those two areas. So without any objection, I'd like to appoint Mr. Aguirre to the planning commission, so that way he can start being an active member of that commission. And I'd like to hear, or at least get support from council members to appoint Mr. Aguirre to the planning commission. Is there any objections to him being appointed to the planning commission? Please let me know.
No objection, Mr. Mayor. I would move to appoint Micah Geary to the planning commission.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Sounds like we don't have any objections, and we have support from council members. So I think he's still on our Zoom meeting, so Mr. Aguirre, so welcome to the planning commission, and then look forward to meeting you. I don't think I met you before, but maybe I have. I just, I'm horrible with names, go with faces. So if anything, we'll look forward to seeing you in the future. And any questions, please reach out to myself if needed, and Mr. City Manager, so obviously he's well-versed in everything to do with the city. So welcome to the planning commission. Okay, that's the only appointment I have for tonight, and up next, we have our city request status support. Mr. City Manager.
All right. Let Jackie get caught up there. It moved quick. So some of these items, we are also starting to report to you in the monthly reports. The department heads put together a monthly update on various projects, initiatives, and so forth. So some of, some of these are also going to be covered there. There's no new update on the disabled parking at the senior center. Public Works has reported to you in the past that we are in the process of applying for the AARP, American Association of Retired Persons Grant Program for funding that. And until we hear further back, we won't have any further information on this one. Let's scroll down. The next one is the tree replacement plan. We are moving forward with efforts through Public Works to grind out and replace or remove some of the stumps in various tree wells in downtown, both in the sidewalks and parking lots. Most of that work, I believe, is completed or nearing completion. And then a little later this, this spring or early summer, Director Fisher will be back to talk with you about his plans for replanting the replacement trees that we have intended to do in that area. On the, let's see, I think we scroll past. Okay, there we go, guardrails. Council's aware on this one, the, in order to qualify for the funding, for potential funding opportunities with DOT for the guardrails, council, or we were advised that we have to do a safety plan. Council recently approved and authorized the city going forward with, contract with our design firm, HLA, to produce that safety plan, which will be necessary to get adopted by council before we can go forward with applying for funding to put in, hopefully address these safety issues on these guardrails. So that's still a work in progress. Shane, do we have an estimate yet from HLA on the timeline for when they expect to be able to produce?
We're thinking here, at end of June or July, we'll start forming the committee. It'll be made up of staff members, council member, some other members of the community, probably the port, maybe even the hospital, the school district. We'll be putting that committee together to talk about the different safety elements that each agency kind of identifies, and then we'll sit down and weed through that. So I'm guessing by probably mid-June, so here another month, I'll be, I'll be coming to council with, with more information on how that committee's formed.
Okay, but in terms of the actual report itself, it's several months after that, as I understand from the scope of work, before we'll see the plan completed. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. With regard to homelessness, we don't have much of an update, no real new activity here locally, but we do continue to monitor litigation that may affect the city. Most recent example of that, and just for public's awareness also, very recently, on April 20th of this year, in a case brought in Los Angeles, a district court in California held that homelessness there is an emergency that mandates local government exercise its emergency powers to shelter the homeless. This is significant because it's kind of a step beyond just some of the case law that we've seen here in Boise v. Martin, or in the Grants Pass case, where local governments were primarily being constrained from criminalizing or penalizing people for being homeless, but the courts had not, in those cases, mandated that local government actually provide shelter. In this case, District Court ordered the city of Los Angeles to exercise its emergency powers to house the homeless. The city and county of Los Angeles have approximately 60,000 homeless residents. The court focused specifically on a very large community of homeless that encompasses roughly almost a third of that overall population. And the court ordered LA officials to house unaccompanied women and children living in that community within 90 days, families within 120 days, and all other houseless people living there within 180 days. The court also ordered Los Angeles to place $1 billion in an escrow account to address the emergency and appointed a special master to oversee the city's efforts. Now, Los Angeles has already announced they are appealing this decision to the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. That is significant to us because while it will likely take quite some time before that case is argued and a ruling is issued, if the Ninth Circuit does make a ruling on this matter, that ruling then becomes binding across the entire Ninth Circuit jurisdiction, which includes Washington State. And so this could be potentially very significant, depending on the outcome of the legal process. So we'll continue to keep council apprised of any developments in that area. Next up, the fire department residency program. We are now also including that every month in the monthly report. So with council's approval, we can just, we could just, you know, include this and also the, there's another report we're doing now every month for you in the monthly report on grants. So if you'd like to discuss it here, we can, or if there's questions, Fire Chief and I are certainly happy to answer questions as they come up in between, but we are giving you this information also every month in the monthly report.
So Casey, also the homelessness, Counselor Chris, do you still want to get reports on this status report? Or do you want to stick it off from here, since we have seemed to solve some of the issues that we have with vehicles being parked?
I have no problem to take it off, as long as we keep updated on it.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think I have any update or new information, any changes on the police reserves from the police chief, other than our focus, of course, recently has been getting the last of the vacancies filled, and we're making progress there. We have just one left, and we're, we have an update for you on that also in the report, but it talks about, we're screening some candidates now as a possible lateral to fill the sixth vacancy. We did also complete the report on the actions taken in response to the Roger Brooks presentation. We presented on that back in March. And the last item is, there was a request for a list of all active grants. In the, in the April report that we just sent out to you this afternoon, the finance team are, had been tracking grants internally using a, they had an internal tracking spreadsheet and some additional information. We've adapted and distilled that information into an item that will be in your monthly reports going forward, so we'll have a list of those in their current status every month in that document as well.
Okay, council members, any additional items for the council request status report? Okay, move on to our next agenda, which is going to be other reports, announcements, and requests by council. And we'll start with Counselor Hicks.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Farmer?
Where are we with the swimming pool this year?
With the swimming pool? Director Alba, do you want to speak a little more to that? I did let council know that you're in discussions with Prosser and Grandview for trying to see if we can share staff and get enough staff between the cities to be able to open the pools, but I know we're not quite there yet with our own recruitment efforts. Do you want to elaborate on kind of what we're doing with that?
Yes, we have set the pool opening date as June 14th. We are looking at a modified swim season as far as what we are going to offer. We've been in discussion between the Grandview and Prosser pools on how to share resources as far as lifeguards. We are all experiencing lower-than-normal turnout for lifeguard applications. I've also began to start ordering the supplies that we need to prepare lifeguards with their PPE and signage for our patrons, and it will look different this year. But we want to, I really want to stress this, because of the nature of our city, we are going to have open swim because I think that there's just not a way for parents to come to supervise. So we will be making sure that we follow the number guidelines through the Department of Health. Grandview has decided to do open swim and then a family swim, and then Prosser has decided to do only family swims, and they have to be by reservation only. And so I think that that was a good method for our pool, so we'll have a hybrid method. We aren't going to do swim lessons this year, but we are going to defer people to Grandview and Prosser that are going to have modified swim lessons, and then the city of Richland is only going to use their pool for swim lessons. So between all of our resources, we're going to try to get people to the place that they want to be and make sure that we offer what we can. We're working with the swim team right now to ensure that they have time in the pool, which, you know, they may have to have two separate sessions in the morning so that they can get their swimmers in and out of the pool. So all these things are in the works right now. We've, I have my first review of lifeguards, pool manager and assistant manager sitting on my desk to look at in the morning, and we will get the pool open.
Okay, Counselor Farmer, any additional reports, announcements, and requests?
No, I don't.
Okay, Counselor Hart?
Yes, I have a question regarding a couple of things. One of them is, where are we on the baseball field? I noticed we had a comment about that, that they're being worked on, particularly in South Sunnyside, Sunnyside, excuse me, Park. And I see that the configuration here, the center for the testing site has been already completed so that the kids can come in, families, for baseball, for the Cal Ripken program. So what is the situation at Sunnyside Park, as I guess, I'm interested in it this morning?
Sure, so let me, sorry, just too many buttons. So last month, Public Works Director Fisher first was meeting with Cal Ripken, the baseball league, on preparations for the summer season, and we put in place plans for South Hill Park to be ready for their use by later this month. There's already an existing agreement in place for maintenance services. City staff mow the area of the South Hill Park fields for the Cal Ripken League, but the coaches and parents perform all of the other maintenance on the fields and facilities in order to meet the strict league standards per longstanding agreement between Cal Ripken and the city. In the meantime, they did ask Shane about possibly having some informal practices at the softball fields at Sunny View Park. Now, the softball fields are not regulation, they don't meet the regulations for baseball, and they are not maintained and have not been historically at all. In fact, I think Shane told me the last time there was any kind of organized play at the softball fields out at Sunny View was over three years ago. However, we do maintain, just, we do mow them, but that's really all that's done there. So there's not been any kind of organized softball activity for the last several years. And as you mentioned, Councilor Hart, in preparation for these plans, we've been working with the Yakima Health District's COVID-19 testing site at South Hill Park. They've been revamping their layout to use the smaller parking lot area just east of the community center. Current plans are, they're continuing to pay us to rent the area and that part of the facility to continue to offer testing at the site through July, but this will not interfere with other public use of the park grounds, and the park has, you know, the park grounds have remained open all along.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Okay, I was curious if we've had any more movement on the skate park construction, and if you have any idea what's going on at the post office as far as that landscaping situation.
So that's a, I'll answer both parts of that question. Actually, just today, we had a follow-up conversation with representative from the Daybreak Rotary. They are moving forward with plans for the skate park. They've been fundraising for that for a number of years. They are looking at kind of bringing a scalable or phased proposal, and actually, we just talked this morning about scheduling that for your June 7th council workshop to bring an update on their fundraising activities, their proposed site information, and how that's progressing. They have some really exciting ideas about how to bring this together. They've been working with other community members, and so we're looking forward to being able to bring you that proposal, get your feedback, and then hopefully be able to put in place the arrangements for them to then be able to move forward with completing the design work. I'm not aware or familiar, though, of what steps they are taking with regard to the landscaping at the post office. It's my understanding that last year during, at one point during the COVID pandemic, the Rotary organization did secure approval from the postmaster, regional postmaster, to be able to assist them with landscaping. They were going to come back and work on that more this summer, but I don't know the details of what their plans are. That's all been arranged between Rotary and the post office, but we'd be happy to see if I can reach out to our contacts there and get you an update.
Okay, anything else, Councilor Hart? Okay, here now we'll move on to our Deputy Mayor Burisma, questions, reports, announcements, or questions?
I have no questions, reports or announcements, just a comment. I am absolutely thrilled to hear that the work in planning and fundraising for the skate park is moving forward, and I look forward to hearing your report. I've long been a supporter of a skate park closer within city limits and even closer to downtown. I think it's a fantastic activity, even though I'm not a skater myself, I would cause massive bodily harm to myself if I even tried, but I think it's a fantastic idea, and I really want to see this move forward. So I'm looking forward to the report coming up.
Councilor Ristucci?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. May 13th, YACOR's board meeting is going to take place. Mr. Mayor, YACOR is the Yakima County Consortium for Public Safety. There are changes proposed to the rules which will require an upper and lower valley mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would strongly recommend, if you can, to serve as the lower valley mayor for this group. This group oversees a communications platform for 47 separate EMS, police, and fire agencies in Yakima County. As a former founding member and a former vice chair, I've been actively involved with this group for many years. I think the second-largest city's mayor should be on this board, so if you haven't reached out to Commissioner Lindy, I would encourage you to do so.
I'll reach out to him, see if there's something I can jump on. I definitely think I have time for that, so I'll reach out to him. If you have any information that might be helpful, I would appreciate if you could send my way as well.
I will forward you the latest agenda with the proposed rule changes. So, and then, Mr. Mayor, on the 17th of May, we have the MPO, RTPO, and YVCO exec committee meeting at 1:30, which I'll be chairing, and then on the 19th, we have the YVCO general membership meeting, virtual Zoom at 6:00 PM. Mr. Mayor, I believe it's you and Mr. Burisma that are the primary and alternate, correct?
And no, Councilor Burisma is the primary on that one.
Okay. Mr. Burisma, are you going to be attending the meeting on the 19th?
I believe, Mr. Ristucci, that I will be, as long as somebody makes sure that I get the Zoom login information, I will make every effort to do it.
The only reason I bring this up, Mr. Mayor, just so you understand, is that I cannot vote for the city, so if you or Mr. Burisma don't show up, the City of Sunnyside can't vote at the general membership.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, if you can make it, just let me know, and I'll put it in my agenda to make sure I jump on as well, so just let me know, and we'll go from there.
Well, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Henry?
I don't have any updates. I did just want to give, I guess, my condolences and thanks to our neighboring city, Prosser, for both their police and city halls burning down. I'm sure most of you heard about that, that no one got hurt, and I'm glad the Fire Department did everything they could to take care of that. I know it was a wildfire, so that's all I got, thank you.
Councilor Hicks, I don't know if I started with you or not, but if I haven't, anything you want to add?
Councilor Hicks?
Nothing really much, just I was there when Prosser went out, and it's kind of nice to see all the agencies working together, Sunnyside, Grandview, Benton City, Pasco, everyone was there. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Casey, somebody was brought to my attention, there's some of the grates that are downtown that are around the base, so some of the trees are kind of lifting a little bit, posing potentially a trip hazard for some individuals who may not be paying attention, so if we could take a look at that, make sure that those are, you know, as the trees grow up, we need to kind of get rid of some of those expansion rings that they have there. And they pointed out to me a tree that's dead, I hadn't noticed it, but it's a tree dead here in front of, kind of like a port de quito, across the street from there, the bar, there's a completely dead tree, so that might be something to take a look at also when we're looking at those trees from downtown. Those are the twines that got brought to me, and I don't have anything else I could think of, so at this point, no reports. So we'll move on to the next section of our agenda. Upcoming council? Jackie, will you say something?
Yeah, I was, did you see the email I sent you about the training in three days?
Yes, thank you for that, and I did see the email that we had a couple of individuals who were interested in attending. Let me see, I've got my email here. So we had a councillor, deputy mayor, and myself interested in attending this training for a how-to series of city council and commission meetings. Jackie, give us just a little bit of an update on this, and that way, and see if we get more people interested.
Yeah, it's a three-day training, and the first one is May 13th, which is in three days, and I did receive responses from a few of you. Let me check the email. I got two yes responses, one no, one maybe, and two no responses, yes. There's still time to register, she said. The next one is May 20th, and then the last one would be May 27th. The cost is $1,000 to the city, and it's up to council if you want to register for this training. And it's pound-two series on city council and commission meetings, and I have it up on the screen here by Ann McFarland, and I've taken some of her trainings and had her teach some of the classes for our clerks' trainings as well, and she's really good.
It sounds like during the evening, 6:00 or 7:30 PM, so that might work with some of our schedules. I just feel like if we don't have at least half a council interested in attending, it might be not very beneficial investment of $1,000 for just a couple council members. So council members, for those of you who haven't responded, if you are interested, if you get at least four council members, I think that may be beneficial. So if you could just pull us one more time, Jackie?
You want me to pull you guys again?
The ones who haven't responded, I think so, that way, if we have some interest, and then I'll touch base with Mr. Casey in the next day or two, that way we could try to get in there if we have enough individuals interested. The ones who have replied already, obviously, we know their answers, so we don't need to do those, but the ones who haven't had a chance to reply to you, if you could just pull them, and hopefully we'll see what their schedule looks like.
I'll contact Councilor Ristucci and Councilor Henry, and Councilor Hart was not here when I polled everybody, so she says she's a yes. That's three yes votes, that three yes there will attend.
Jackie, unfortunately, I'm a no vote. My schedule doesn't permit me to attend the meetings, although I've attended many meetings with Ann McFarland and, you know, as an AWC board member for many years, got to work with her as the parliamentarian for the AWC board, so good training, definitely, just unfortunately, my schedule's not going to allow me to permit to go this time, Mr. Mayor.
And Jackie, I apologize, I haven't got back in as well, I've been working out of town and will be for the next couple of weeks, I will not be able to attend this as well.
This is Joey Hart. I just want to say, anytime you're able to attend a Ann McFarland training, you learn something new, and things you didn't thought knew, she quickly corrects you to the right protocol, and it's always entertaining. Are these them, the trainings?
Yes, they're webinars.
Okay, thank you, I would very much like to attend that, thank you.
So Mayor, I still have three, only three for yes.
Okay.
Councilor Farmer, you have?
I'm going to leave it to Mr. Casey to decide on this, because obviously, if it's not worth the investment, $1,000, obviously, it's not a whole lot of money in the biggest couple of things, but it's still money that if we don't see the advantage of it, or council members don't see the benefit of it, then it may not be a worthwhile investment, but I'll touch base with you, Mr. Casey, and see if we could get, you know, see what you think, and then we'll go from there.
I may have a tiebreaker, Councilor Farmer.
Well, you'll have a tiebreaker, I just don't think it's going to fit into my schedule.
Okay. So we have four no's and three yes.
So at this point, Mr. Casey, I think we'll just postpone it for the next one that might be available, and we'll try to see if we'll try to work our schedule a little bit better. I just don't feel personally that three of us, you know, to invest $1,000 would be a wise investment at this time.
Understood. We'll continue keeping our eye out, as Councilor Ristucci and others have mentioned, Councilor Hart, I think, referenced too, Ms. McFarland does do the Jurassic Parliament or types of trainings periodically. While this is a particularly good opportunity, there are, I would anticipate, we'll see other opportunities for similar training that may, you know, work a little better with people's schedules and availability.
Thank you, Jackie, for the reminder. I did see the email, and I meant to bring it up, but I completely forgot, so thank you for that reminder. All right, up next in our agenda tonight is going to be upcoming council meetings, Mr. City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Coming up at the end of this month, May 24th, Public Works Director has a couple of items on the planned agenda. We spoke earlier this year about the fact that the Federal Aviation Administration is requiring us to update and expand upon our airport layout plan to create an actual airport master plan. The FAA is fully funding that effort. It's estimated approximately up to $600,000 to complete this highly technical and complicated document, but we have gone out to bid and anticipate being able to bring back contract award recommendation for council to consider to award that work and get started on that. Director Fisher also has a Title VI agreement and report that we have to submit annually. We'll be bringing that to you for consideration, and we are currently in the process of evaluating proposals that have come in under our request for proposals for prosecution services. We haven't completed that process yet, but anticipate being through the evaluation phase and ready to make a recommendation on an award by your May 24th meeting. With that, we have a fairly full workshop, and it just got fuller today with the meeting we had with the Rotary regarding the skate park. We were going to have our planning supervisor provide you just a status update and briefing on comprehensive planning, just to kind of keep that in front of you over the next few months. Director Alba was going to provide you the details on the pool reopening plan. Once we have all that ready to go, that'll be about a week before the pool opens. We're also planning to start the discussions with you regarding how the council may wish to look at its options for American Rescue Plan, the Federal Stimulus Act, distribution and allocations. We just received today new documentation from the United States Treasury Department, providing more detail about what those funds can or cannot be used for, and so we're just starting our review of that information. And then I plan to provide a bit of an update on legislation that has been signed or vetoed by the governor since the last workshop. And as mentioned a moment ago, we'll also add, we just talked today with Rotary about adding the skate park update for that workshop item. And then in June, we have a, this will be a major milestone. We are moving forward with the Midvale Road construction project. This is the first major project that'll be, in which the city's match will be largely funded out of the funds approved by voters for the Transportation Benefit District, and that's currently going out to bid and should be ready for council's approval by mid-June. And I think that's probably what, as far as I'll go tonight, just the rest of it is, you know, we're starting to plug things in for later in the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Any agenda items, please, Mr. Casey nor myself, and we'll look into getting them added and getting them on some future agenda meetings. Up next, we have items from City Manager and Department Heads, Mr. Casey.
All righty, thank you, sir. Just a couple of quick updates tonight on COVID. There's, I'll throw a bit of data out at you, but I think buried in all of this information is a theme that's emerging, which is that we are seeing progress and improvement in the pandemic, even though some of the numbers are still, you know, quite challenging. Yakima County today reached 30,729 cases, but only seven residents are currently hospitalized. We're currently in Phase III of the state's reopening framework, and that framework has been paused, and we don't expect another update until on or around May 17th. As of this weekend, May 8th, 37.3% of Yakima County residents over the age of 16 have been fully vaccinated. Over a third of the county is fully vaccinated. In addition to the vaccination site at State Fair Park, which is free and accessible, the Health District continues to work with farms and other businesses to bring mobile vaccine clinics everywhere throughout the county, and they still are encouraging folks that would like to see this brought to their workplace or to community site to reach out to them. In addition, today, the Federal Food and Drug Administration approved expanding the use of the Pfizer vaccine to adolescents aged 12 through 15. And once the State Department of Health issues further guidance, the Yakima Health District will begin working with areas, schools, and pediatricians, and pharmacies to aid in youth vaccination efforts. In addition, today- In addition, today, the Yakima Health District announced that we have, for the first time in several weeks, dropped below 200 for our average, 14-day rolling average of new case, new cases. This was the all-important threshold for staying in Phase 3 originally. We haven't been below that since mid-March. But what this also means is that, under the state's framework, schools will be able to go to three-foot physical distancing, drop from six foot to three foot, three feet, excuse me. Now, we understand, Sunnyside School District is among those that plans to go to the three-foot physical distancing fairly soon, along with Grandview, Mapton, and East Valley. However, there are school districts in the valley that have indicated already they, they are not. Yakima, Tappanish, and the Mount Adams School Districts have said they will not go to three-feet distancing until this fall. We talked, we had briefing earlier, comments from Representative Dufau about some of the activity going on in the legislative session. One of the bills that I briefed council on recently, Senate Bill 5226, which would restrict the suspension of driver licenses for non-payment of fines and fees. Interesting development, last week, a Thurston County Superior Court judge ruled that the license suspension law is unconstitutional insofar as it applies to persons who are indigent when there is no meaningful evaluation by the court of the driver's ability to pay. And the ACLU, which brought that lawsuit, was urging the governor to veto most of Senate Bill 5226 because it still permitted debt-based license revocations. However, today, this afternoon, the governor signed Senate Bill 5226 as it was passed by the legislature. He did not veto any of it. I also wanted to let council know, coming up, another bill, a couple bills that we've talked about, Senate Bill 5115, which would make changes to workers' compensation and reporting requirements during health emergencies, and Senate Bill 5172, which is the one that would phase in overtime pay for agricultural workers over the next three years, but also ensure that employers would not be held liable for back pay. The governor announced today he will be in Yakima tomorrow, here on, on site, to take action on these and several other farmworker and workplace-related bills in downtown Yakima. So we'll know the outcome of, of that legislation after the governor takes action tomorrow. And that is my report for tonight. Let me see who's already got their mics on. Public Works Director Fisher, and do you have any further items for council?
Yeah, I just got one quick update on Midvale Road. So I'm sure some of you've noticed the landscape strips on both sides are overgrown and dying, and that was, that was a decision that, that we had made with the port. The port had, had been maintaining those for about a part of 20 years, and the plan is to remove that, those strips and the grass that's in them, because it's problematic for drainage, and line that with rocks. So what we're going to do is wait for the Midvale Road project to get finished up this fall, and then we'll start the process of removing the, the dead vegetation and start putting landscape rock in those strips. And that's all I have.
Casey, you're here at the moment.
Sorry, thank you. Police Chief Escalera, are you ready?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Actually, the police department is currently working on some issues in the jail. We've lost, we've lost some of our ability to electronically can, open and close doors. That's pretty significant for us. The, we've been in contact with Cornerstone Services, who is the original vendor who came in and, and put that in when the building was built. So we're basically right back to keys again, and using keys to move about the facility until we can get some, a better idea as to what it's going to take to repair that, if it can even be repaired. We do, we have opened considerable dialogue with Cornerstone to come in to do a complete replacement of the electronics and all the technology that is designed to open and close and secure a lot of the areas that we do have in the jail. So all of that is in the works, but that happened over the weekend. So we're, we're doing, you know, we're doing well at the moment back there, it's just very slow. Secondly, we've got in-service training starting, so the detectives will be covering the street for us while we have our line personnel in attendance at training, so it's going to be a little hit and miss and kind of backlog us a little bit on our investigations, but we'll try to relieve them as soon as possible. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Sir, Finance Director?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to report out on a couple of things that's going on in the Finance Department. We are making an effort to, what I would call push down some work. Delilah is training staff that we have currently onboard to do some of the monthly tasks such as Department of Revenue, the easier bank statements, and things that she has done historically for the last few years in order for her to start training with me to actually start doing some more of my job and learn the things that I do. The annual report is one that I've taken ownership since I've started at the City of Sunnyside, since we were two years behind when I started, and then I had to report out several years in a row. I, I really kind of took it on like my baby and didn't want to let it go. So I, I am now transferring some of the reports this, this year to Delilah for her to actually do the report, start to finish with my review, and then obviously my knowledge of what we need to do. Next year, the goal is for Delilah to start the report and with my assistance, complete it from beginning to end. I would like her to be able to step into that role at any time, and I think this is a good thing for us. We, in the finance staff, will have four different individuals that are available and know how to do reporting for, you know, monthly tasks. So this is the kind of thing that really is a good thing for us to start doing. And it's taken us a while. Our goal was to do it last year, but it just didn't happen. And then the other thing I'd like to report out on, and you'll see this a little bit in the report today that went out with Mr. Casey. I have the opportunity to find out that Express Bill Pay, our credit card issuer, has a program that's called Forms Builder. And this program, you can actually go in and build a form and embed it in your website, and a customer can go to the form, fill it out, and then if there's a fee associated with it, it can, their credit card can be charged. And they don't need to log in, they actually, most customers won't know that they're actually leaving the city's website to go to a security platform for the credit card charge. I've created one form for our billing department just for the payment side so that they can get their invoices paid. Already, I've had three successful uses just since last week. I've created one for our utility billing customers that is a tenant landlord form, so there's no money associated with it. But the really nice thing about it is it emails staff to know that the form's been filled out, they can go get the information. And it's a very robust program, so I can see it being very useful in many different city applications later. So I, I'm really excited, we've got a lot of people training on it. We're going to take small steps, but eventually, we hope to have, you know, anything that has a payment associated with it or something that needs to be filled out as a form, it's on our website and available for our citizens. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Anderson?
Good evening, Mr. Casey and Mayor, council members. I really don't have anything real new to, to discuss. We did receive notice yesterday that the State Department of Ecology is going to go forward with its hazardous materials equipment grant this year. So we're, it's going to be focused on that. That's about a 30-day window to, to look into what our possibilities are, if we can participate in that or not. Other than that, I have nothing else. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
And Claire Crandoria?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and council members. That, that's the, that concludes the department report.
Right, thank you, Mr. Casey. And okay, well, that concludes our meeting tonight, be no, no objection. So nice meeting, as adjourned at 7:50 PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a good rest of the evening.
Not at all.